All right, I'll call the school committee of August 13th, 2025 to order Superintendent Ray, would you call the roll?
Michelle.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Maria's on her way. Randy?
Here.
Mayor Groan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Megan?
Here.
Chad?
Here.
And Jeremy's present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. All please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Adjustments to the agenda, I do have one. Tonight, I'm especially pleased to share some good news. We're bringing back something that's been on our wish list for a long time, having student representatives on the Bedford School Committee. I think we all agree, our job is to make the best decision we can for students, and the best way to do that is to hear directly from them. So these student representatives will speak for our, all of our students, including all the schools, including the vocational school, and all across our district, and give us firsthand insight into what's working and what's not, how our policies are felt in real life, in the classroom and beyond. So excited to propose two new student leaders who've earned the trust of their classmates. Both have been elected to class president, and both of them deeply involved in athletics and academics, and they bring a lot of dedication, perspective, and willingness to speak up. So I'm proud to propose Cordelia Kane, junior class president, and Marcus Perkins, sophomore class president.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. McCurry?
I just want to congratulate you and thank you for taking on this. So I look forward to your journey.
Yeah. Hear, hear. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Please join me in a round of applause for Marcus and Cordelia. Marty? Superintendent Ray? Both students do have a short introduction, just to introduce themselves to the school committee, and you might grab Marie's microphone there, but they've both been able to prepare something. Perfect. We would love to hear that. Let's get it loud and clear, and right up to that mic if you can, whoever wants to go first.
My name is Marcus Perkins. I'm going to be a sophomore here at Bedford High School. I'm currently involved in football, but do basketball in the winter and track in the spring. The sense of community is a big part of sports, which is why I love being a part of a team. I'm also in all honors classes, which is pretty difficult when you're a three-sport athlete, but I've learned to balance my school and my sports. I also participate in clubs. I was part of our Be the Change team my freshman year, and helped lead our Challenge Day, where I got to meet a bunch of new people and felt more connected within my school. I was also selected to go to the Leadership Summit in Sanford, also my freshman year, where I got to learn about being a leader, and yeah, it was, it was fun. One of the main things I hope to achieve is working closely with our principal, solve all problems that may arise, and be a voice for my peers. Some things I'd like to kind of incorporate is maintaining positivity throughout the school and establishing a communication system for students to be able to express, express their concerns within the school, and then maybe some more school events involving/connecting the community. And then also having a big community board that shows possible plays and other stuff that's going on, not just within our school. And I'm really looking forward to be a student committee member here, along with giving input and making decisions to make my school a safer, more comfortable place to learn.
You're here. Nice job, Marcus. And Cordelia, if that will reach, Lisa, we might need to borrow yours.
My name's Cordelia Kane. I'm also a three-sport athlete at Bedford High School. I play on the field hockey, ice hockey, and lacrosse team. I'm also the treasurer of the Interact Club and a member of the National Honors Society. I too agree that I want to be able to, like, do more community through, service through the school and, like, community events. I think being a part of the community is very important for us to develop as people, and I'm very grateful for being selected to do this.
Thank you, Marcus. Great job. We're really excited, everything you bring to this. I think I heard themes of, of communication and outreach and giving back, and I think those are great themes for all of us, so we appreciate that very much. We look forward to your contributions throughout the upcoming school year, and it's going to be a lot of hard work, so we'll be digging in together. So with that, I would take a motion for approval of last minute, meeting's minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions? Nice job, Marie.
I'm just keeping it flowing.
Moved by John, seconded by Marie. Any, any discussion on the minutes? Corrections? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous.
I've been free my all day. That's gone, long gone.
Very good. Okay, I will read through the consent agenda. It's pretty long, given the upcoming school year, and then take a motion after that if people are supportive. So I, item F, consent agenda nominations, Daniel Weeks, BIS teacher, Robin Mose, COT, CNA, Susan Gibney, business manager, Nick Marcus, Center of Technology Business teacher. We have some stipend approvals, and members of the committee jump in if you'd like to take those separately. Continuing through the appointments, Tara Walsh, BHS nurse, Stephanie Blanchett, BMS admin assistants, Vicky Martin, BIS ed tech three, Tamisa Chapers, BHS admin assistant, Patrick Barnowski, BHS ed tech three, Tunga Lozlo, custodian, David Alexander, maintenance. In resignations, we have Rhea Noes, Maureen Redmond, Ryan Perry, Shiana LaRose, Karen Gellis, Connor Chenriak, Ashland Hansen, Xavier Batana, Bryant Scally, Teresa Rosen, Edward Cruz, Marissa Wilson, Chrissy Jordan, Berta Cassina, Ann Arbor, Heidi Morrell, and Eric Wales. Pardon me, I missed the transfers. Transfers, Pam Emerson and Marcus Kudar Kurash.
So moved.
Second.
That's moved by John, seconded by Marie. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Megan.
Just given how many resignations you just went through, I just, my quick question is, like, how are we set up for the start of school for staffing?
I think it's important to remember that because we've only, didn't, only had one meeting in July, you're getting a month's worth of those. We're actually in a pretty good place. We're feeling pretty positive, and that's going to be part of my superintendent's report.
So just be patient.
Anything further? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Very good. Speaking of the superintendent's report, Jeremy?
All right. A lot of different items here tonight, and first and foremost, congratulations to our students who are on there. Known Cordelia probably the longest of the two of you, just because seeing her around the office and knowing her mom a little bit, but I, I got to know Marcus this spring through a kind of a student group that came together, talked about a few issues, and walking away from that meeting, I was just very impressed with Marcus on that. I said, that's, that's one of them, and then it worked out great that both of these two students were elected by their peers, so happy to have you back on that piece. We're weeks away from the start of the school year, and just a reminder that teachers are back the 21st, the 25th, the 26th. Students, grades one through nine on the 27th, one through 12 on the 28th, kindergarten on the September 2nd, and pre-K on the 4th. Those are the starting dates for those. One of the most important things someone can do at home this time of year is that if you have moved, if your daycare has changed, or your work schedule has changed, and you haven't called the bus department yet, or sent them an email, that's really, really helpful for us, because the first days of school, trying to juggle kids and get them home safely the first day, is always very stressful for our bus drivers. So please do that if you're listening at home, if you haven't yet. Construction around the city and other places certainly plays a role in how successful we can be on those first days, and so please be patient with us, because sometimes we have to alter our schedules based off what road work is happening around and tweak things just a little bit. BPS construction is moving along, and hopefully we'll be able to get you over there in a couple of weeks. Kind of been waiting for a set of stairs to go in, so that you don't have to take a ladder to the second floor. I think that'd be a little safer with the stairs, but that's on tap over the next couple of weeks, so we can go over there and see the space. It's coming along real nice. As far as hiring, we're actually in a pretty decent spot. I mean, obviously, we've had some resignations recently, but we were able to fill a couple of positions at the COT. Teaching positions have been full, but we are going to talk about a motion to ask for another position throughout the meeting, and I'll explain to you why as we look at the enrollment update. This year, we'll have a sport staff contract to merge. Ed tech twos, threes, and admin assistants will come together into one contract, so that will be a lot on the hiring side of things. And I will mention it now, and Chris will be talking to it again in the enrollment update, is that during Finance Committee, we talked about an additional ELL teacher. We believe that our numbers for ML or ELL students right now is sitting at 455, based off registrations, which we were at 403 on October 1 last year, and so that's a really large increase for us, and we'll talk more about that during Chris's enrollment update. Happy to take any questions.
Questions for Superintendent Ray? No questions? Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Thanks for that report. We'll look forward to that tour. It's exciting to see the progress over to primary school. I'll get this out, update at the council side as well, and it's basically, I think you're telling me, two weeks from today is, is the first day for some of the students. Is that correct? The 27th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, it's that quick.
It's two weeks off, and it's always a big traffic day, so as we're all kind of figuring out how to get from point A to point B, and of course, we are doing some construction on Hill Street, which I think is going to go at least a week into school, so let's allow some extra time. I'm sure we'll be doing the bikes like we've done in the past, but just getting ready for, excited for a new school year. Okay, I know we do have some committee reports. Would anyone from the Finance Committee, perhaps Randy, like to give a report?
Happy to. Finance Committee met this afternoon, and we actually discussed a lot of the things that are in the new business section of our agenda tonight, so talked about high school repair that's needed, the enrollment update Jeremy talked about. We received a gracious monetary gift, we'll talk about that as well, and then we got a chance to meet the new business manager, so all good stuff that we will get to, so that's it.
Thank you. Questions for Randy or the Finance Committee? Anyone else from the Finance Committee want to add anything? Okay, perfect. Michelle, on policy.
So policy also met today, and we discussed several new items. One especially that I want to put on your radar is temperature. The LDL 11 just came out, so we will be looking at, Chris has been working on policy with Saco and Dayton, that we'll look at temperature and when school is in session, if we reach certain extreme temperatures. So that is on the agenda for next time. There's multiple other ones, you'll see them. What's, there's one other one, JICI is also something we wanted to talk about. You will see that we just updated a little bit regarding our insurance for our athletes, and the fact that that's going to be strongly encouraged versus having to have insurance. I think that's the biggest changes for anything. Anything else?
Just to piggyback on what Michelle said, so those two policies that we are drafting today, I think by, when we meet next time, we're going to try to do a first and second reading for them, so we can have them in place for the beginning of school. So we did a lot of workshopping on those, and then Chris is going to get those notes done, and then we'll be asking the board to do a first and second reading next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks for the good work of those committees. Unless I'm mistaken, there's no other committee reports? Are there any other committees that want to give a report? Marie?
Not that I want to give a report, but can we make sure that we have the Evaluation Committee, because that's going to come sooner this year than later?
Yeah, noted. We carry that forward.
The dates have changed.
Yeah, perfect. So we'll add that to the standing list of committee reports. Perfect. Okay, that will, there's no old business, that will take us to new business. A couple of these are updates, and then we will need motions on a couple of them as well, but Jeremy, would you like to start us off with the enrollment update?
Yes, so I'd ask Chris to be part of this conversation. We, obviously, as you know in the past, we, we monitor enrollments throughout the year pretty regularly, and I think last year, every school committee meeting until probably the end of October, there was an enrollment update, and we'll get the graph going and showing people where we are. But in the last several days, one of the things that we're, we're seeing is that our overall population of students, the total number is hovering right about where it's been, in that 2,400 mark, but we are seeing major increase in our ML population and registrations. And where we stand today, and again, this is as of, Chris, you wrote this memo on the, on the 8th.
Correct.
And we've had updates since then.
Correct.
We have 413 ML students who are fully registered, 18 students who are in the testing phase, and then another 25 paper applications that have not been in, put into the computer yet, which puts us at 455 ML students, which at that point, based off October 1 numbers, is, you know, a 50-plus kid increase. And so during the Finance Committee, we talked about our immediate need to post for another position, and then see, like last fall, what happens. Now, obviously, there could be some students who leave the district, and maybe we just haven't gotten the notification from those families, or from the other school department. You typically know the kids coming in more than you do the exiting situation, but this is, you know, this is a big increase for us again, and they seem to be younger, younger students, and so we have to prepare ourselves, and Chris, does anything you want to add to this?
I just texted Haley Posey, who runs our Welcome Center, and said, any updates from today? The numbers that Jeremy alluded to about pending paper registrations, I called each school today and said, hey, what do you have? And it's illustrative of the trends, which is, these are younger students. Now, because we have a highly transient population, I don't think that necessarily means that we can expect to serve those students for a period of 10 to 12 years. Only about half of the kids that start with us in kindergarten finish with us as seniors, but nevertheless, our enrollments are skewing younger for the ML population. So Jeremy mentioned 23 pending paper applications. Thirteen of those 23 are at the primary school. Haley Posey just texted me within the last two minutes and said, I have five scheduled families for Bedford registration tomorrow, one scheduled family for Saco, which is typical. Those are her exact words. So tomorrow's five families, not five students. That could represent another 10, 15 multilingual.
Just about it. Can everyone hear Chris okay?
Oh, sorry. Do I need to get closer?
Yeah.
Sorry. So, and we're still three weeks out from the start of school. For those of you who have been on the board a while, I guess, maybe Lisa, I used to do an annual memo where I would project out multilingual enrollments, and then I would be embarrassed every September when I was so far off. It's just an impossible task. I think what makes this year a little bit extraordinary is that we're finding that the lion's share of our new enrollees are coming from the hotel in Saco, as that winds down operations, that where they're finding housing is ultimately here. I spoke to the superintendent in Sanford yesterday and said, Matt, how many students from the hotel have registered in Sanford? He said, none. So outside of service centers like Portland and Lewiston, Bedford has really been a destination primarily for them. So I think my recommendation to the superintendent would be that we post for another multilingual learner position, and that that person be stationed pre-K through four, and that Lindsay and Megan make some decisions about how that person's time is allocated based on their schedule, and based on what we know about assessment results.
So, I think I saw Michelle and then John.
So a quick question, the ones that you spoke about today, the five families today, those aren't including these numbers?
Sorry, no. The text from her was she has appointment for tomorrow.
So they are not included in?
Correct. Right.
And we were already trending young for ML students, correct?
That's correct. Yes. The good, the good, the silver lining in this, that you could see in the memo, is that, you know, we've gone through iterations of different populations and different languages. Very, very difficult to teach a student who's a native Arabic speaker English, because Arabic is a level five language, the hardest to learn, and English is a level five language, which is the hardest to learn. The good news about the languages that we're seeing now, Portuguese, Spanish, French, those are all level one languages, so they're a little bit easier to teach. We share a common alphabet with those languages, so, but the state also expects that we're going to exit them from services sooner than they would an Arabic speaker, or a Chinese speaker, or a Pashto speaker.
John?
I'll make a motion that we add an ELE student, I mean, ELE teacher, and so Jeremy can advertise.
Well, can I, I have one more question first.
Megan?
So I, I'm on board with that. I just also see that at the middle school level, you have 13 new ML registrations. So you're saying this new position would be stationed at BPS, but looking ahead, what are we thinking? You have nine at the high school level, 13 at BMS. Are we looking at maybe also needing another staff member at the higher level as well? I mean, that, those seem like big numbers, too.
Good. I, I think that we just want to make sure that we have a posting and one, and it does not mean that I won't be here at the next meeting asking for the second, because if we can get a posting out there, then maybe we'll have several applicants that we would be able to draw from.
Okay, so it's possible, because Scott's numbers look high, too.
They all look really high right now.
I mean, they all do, right, right.
And I think that that's, that's the piece that we've got to get to, is we've got to start, I've got to start with at least one. I would like to see, you know, again, there could be 25 kids that have registered in another community, and a lot of times, we don't get a records request from that school until the first or second day of school, and so one would be, is, we know we're going to need one, that second one may come right after that.
Lisa?
So that being said, what are, it's kind of late to be posting and hiring. What do you see for a pool of people that qualify for this type of job? I mean...
I think that we are going to probably be picking up the phone and calling every college and university that may have had a program of someone who doesn't have a job, looking through our own staff, who may have had the certification, seeing if I can get somebody conditionally certified who's applied, so those will be, those will be the steps.
I know. It's going to be hard, and even with the one bouncing between Lindsay's school, you know, that's going to be a lot of task.
Yep.
Right? But we have, I think the, there's no option, is what we don't really have, right?
We need to have at least one more teacher.
Yeah, that's what I mean, there's no option.
Chad?
So is it going an assumption that these new students have zero English capability?
No.
So, I guess, is there any benefit in waiting to see what level of assistance they need? Because if they come in and they are fluent in English, then it may reduce the need for an additional resource, at least a second resource. And then the second comment I have is, I remember when I first started on this committee, there seemed to be indicators back then that there were increasing numbers of ML students from the original forecast to where we ended up being. Are there lessons to be learned from that trend analysis, so we can maybe position ourselves better next year and not have to deal with last-minute hiring?
I think the hard part, Chad, is that it's not like our overall population is changing. Like, that's the, that's the difficult piece, is that we're not number for number seeing that increase. I don't have 55 more students here, and so it's, a lot of it is about apartment and rental availability in which families are being accepted or getting those apartments. I mean, that's, that's the big piece of it.
All right, I think, let's see, Marie, and then Lisa.
Is there any funding to assist us in these additions with ML staffing?
So, we're hoping that there will be some hardship funds that came like last year, but it's the ability to spend that money without it being in the budget. So there was $326,000 additional that came last year, but that's sitting in carryover. During Finance Committee, John talked about giving an update in December of where we are based off what we added and if we needed to, going back to the council at that date to see if we could access that 327,000, 26,000, sorry.
Thank you.
Lisa.
I also think the question was, and people are probably wondering, where are they relocated to? And nobody seems to have that solid answer. Where are they living? They're in Bedford? We don't know. Housing is an issue, but they seem to find housing. The other thing, and maybe you know, Chris, or I don't know, when you're registering these students, is there's no question as to, I don't know why I can't see you. It's like the podium should not be there. I'm not going to ask you to move it. There, see? That's better. It's already better.
I got to grab my notes.
When you're filling out applications or whatever that someone's probably assisting them to do, does it say, "Does your student speak English?" Is that a question or can we not ask that question?
The State of Maine requires all SAUs to have as part of the registration process something called a home language use survey. And that's where a parent can declare that my primary language spoken at home is other than English. Or if the parent doesn't declare that and the registrant recognizes that the parent struggles with English can check that box. All that that does is then that triggers our multilingual teacher to screen the student for language proficiency to see whether or not that student is eligible to receive ML services. If the student is eligible, we click the LEP box in Infinite Campus, which is Lang, English Language Profi, no, LEP, Limited English Proficiency. And then we get a subsidy boost, but it's a year in arrears.
Yeah, that I know.
Yeah. Does that answer your question? So, yes, that's how we...
It does, but it's really still vague for, for anyone being prepared. And I know what Chad was saying, but it's still too vague for us to say, "Well, you know, maybe out of the 450 or it might be at 460, it might be 470."
Yes.
You know, 400 don't speak English. That's a big problem. That's like, that's not a one teacher deal. That's, that's not a two teacher deal. That's like, that's a school. You know, that's a small school. I don't know how many you have in Dayton, but that's almost the size of Dayton, if, if not.
Six, they have six.
Yeah, you're going from, from one, one to six in Dayton.
Six, six ML, right?
Yes, one to...
No, but as far as total population, isn't it like a school? If you have 400...
It's going to be 20%, 20% of our student population.
That's a big deal, right?
That's a lot.
Yeah, to try to fit them where? And that was the other question I have for Jeremy and because right off Lindsay's take, we were all shifting because of the school that's not being, going to be ready in time, you know, the addition. And so we're cramming everybody in, right? So that was my biggest concern, like where are we cramming these kids in? And does that sound, it sounds kind of weird to say that, but it's like, what does it do to the class sizes? What does it do to so many, the transportation? I mean, it goes on and on and on. And because it's so late that this is happening to us, we're going to have to pivot really quickly and just go on the flies, what it looks like. I mean, I know it's...
Yeah, and I know there's some angst and some wondering among the school committee about, you know, how is this happening and why are we learning about this now? But really, we're in better shape than we would be if we didn't have a welcome center.
If we didn't have what?
If these families were showing up at Bedford High School on a week when Karen Moody was on vacation, they might not come back until August 30th to register their kid.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'd really be up against it.
Yeah, yeah.
I, quite frankly, I was a little bit, if we didn't have grant money, I wouldn't have kept the lights on at the welcome center this summer. I just didn't think there would be the demand for it.
Right.
We reopened it July 7th. I checked in with Haley. How many people have you met with this week? 12. She's part-time. And, you know, she's at 55. This is not just here, sign this paperwork. This is, sign this paperwork. I'm going to bring you to the school, introduce you to the principal, show you around, get you connected with Maine Care so that your kid has health insurance. If I'm observing that your kid is having trouble seeing, if I'm seeing, sensing that your kid could use some dental care, we're going to try and get you connected with a provider and those sorts of things. So it's really a comprehensive approach so that kids, when they get here, can hit the ground running and focus on academics rather than, "I'm hungry, I'm sick."
Exactly. I mean, that's, and the same with the staff too. And I'm sure that will be a discussion during some kind of staff meeting or opening day discussion as to what's happening, right?
Yeah.
And how we're going to deal with this situation. And yet the question still remains, where are they living? It's like, I don't understand how that many families can just relocate to Bedford when we have such a housing situation.
Yes.
That's a question nobody seems to know, so I guess, I don't know.
I, you know, from an advocacy standpoint, Lisa, I sit on the Office of Refugee and Resettlement Advisory Committee.
Right.
I don't want to drag it out. But basically, every year, the State of Maine makes a proposal to the feds and they say, "This is how many refugees we think we can house and this is where." And my voice has been to say, not, not callously, not unkindly, we're kind of full. And there are other service centers in Maine where refugees are not being resettled. Bangor and Augusta, right? Finally, after years of advocacy, this, the, the plan that Catholic Charities, who's the subcontractor for the state, has submitted to the feds does not have Bedford, Saco on a list of areas that are capable of resettling refugees. So, you know, Chad's question about how can we do a better job with demographics? We can try and influence in that way, but it's not always predicted, like, we couldn't have predicted where Catholic Charities would place families from, from, from the hotel, even though we asked constantly. Charles McGave, every week, Charles, where are they going? Charles, where are they going? Charles, they're going where they can find housing. They're going where they can find housing. I, I can't predict that. I mean, in 2014, the city council paid for a demographic study that said Bedford is dying and it's the oldest city in the State of Maine and it has housing stock that averages 1941 and 892 square feet and this place is doomed. And now it's the youngest city. It's one of the most vibrant cities. It's a city on, I mean, every demographic prediction that's ever been made in this town has been wrong. And we, we just can't do better, I think, than we are doing as a school.
Here, here. John.
And just, just one piece, can I just, just say is that when you look at our overall population, right now, we're only plus 19 students from October 1st of last year.
Yep.
And so, that's the piece. It's, it's a shifting demographic, not necessarily a population boom.
Right. Yes, getting, also getting younger too, right? Yep. Mr. McCurry.
So, at Finance, we also talked about Jeremy possibly having to come back with another request for another teacher. And the big thing was, where are we getting the funding from? That was my big problem. Because last year, you know, we get the funds after we find out how many students we have. So if you remember, I tried to get us to get a different line in there to take these funds and so we'd be able to use them this year. We weren't able to do that. Hopefully, this next budget cycle, we will do that. So my recommendation was, you know, Jeremy was going to check the budget because he's got to stay within those lines. You can't move it from one line to another. Well, we could with council approval, but the, to see where we are budget-wise, because he thinks maybe with summer funding and some of the other stuff, health insurance, we'd be able to fund these positions. And if not, we had $326,000 we got afterwards last year. We could go ask the council if we could use some of these funds that would supply these teachers. That's why we got the funds last year was for those teachers we got hired last year that we never got to use the funds for. And it became carryover in last year's budget and this would go carryover in this year's budget. So it ends up hurting the school. So you need to end up figuring out if we're going to keep up with this scenario, like you were saying, Chad, is, you know, it's outside the budget, you know, but we're getting the funds to fund them, but we're just not able to utilize them the way the budget process works, which makes absolutely zero sense. So my always philosophy was, if we know what these funds are going to be after the fact, so say this year here, we, we get however many students and the state decides that because of that, you're going to get $400,000. We put a line in the budget that says $400,000 and we draw out of that for these, whatever we need for ML student, ML teachers. And if there's none that we need that year, then that funds would go to carryover and we would take the other funds. So it could be a continuation process, but at least this way here, the school will not be shorthanded on funds for stuff that they did have plans for.
I feel confident about the number of one teacher. Jeremy alluded to it briefly. I think the X factor is, is outmigration. And, you know, a lot of students who have moved to another district don't notify us. We get notified when that district says, "Can we have their records, please?" And if they don't have a welcome center, if they're a smaller district, we're not going to get that records request into early September. So we're not going to know those kids are coming off the rolls. The other thing that we don't know is how many kids tested out. That will be entered into the system next week. So that's usually not very many each year, especially given the population that we serve, but there'll be a handful of kids that will have tested out, will no longer require active language instruction, but will be on what's called monitor status where the ML teacher still has some responsibility for them, but they're not part of their class count.
I second the motion.
Want to just remind us of the motion? John?
That Jeremy goes, we debated before we just moved to the second, that Jeremy would go out and try to hire an ELE teacher.
Okay, moved and seconded to post for an ELE teacher. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, looks like that's unanimous. Very good.
Thank you.
Chris, good discussion. Thank you. That takes us to the next item, which I believe is just a memo, Jeremy, and correct me if I'm wrong, if you need a motion on this for the Every Student Succeeds Act.
No, this was just information for you guys of what our allocation for title funding is expected to be once it was released. No major, major changes really.
So we, it's been that released, right?
Well...
Is this last year's?
We've been notified, we've been notified of what to expect for an amount.
So I can clarify?
Yeah, thanks, Mandy. Go ahead.
So title funding has been released. We were able to apply for Title I funding already and that's been substantially approved. That came out, I think, on the 22nd of July. We just received Title II, III, and IV as of last week. Today, I was able to finish the application in totality and submit it to the DOE. So now it waits for them to review and hopefully we'll receive a substantial approval, hopeful within this week.
That's good news. Any other questions or thoughts on that item? Michelle.
So the, the funds that have been released are the ones that the government had not released yet. So that's, that's been released now. But did I read somewhere the State of Maine is still reviewing before they actually give us the funds?
So that's what, when I initially wrote the memo, memo on August 4th, that was my message to the board. Since then, August 6th, they released all the other funds. So I've already written, I've submitted. They kicked it back with a few areas to correct or to write a little bit more about, which I have finished today. And so now that's why I'm really hopeful of substantial approval this week.
Very good. Thanks for that update.
Sure.
Thanks for staying after that. We really appreciate it. It's much needed. Okay, Jeremy, I think you have some items for us on some needed repairs and I don't know if you'll be looking for any motions on this, but certainly so indicate. You want to take us through this memo?
Yes, so over the course of, you know, the last several months, I've communicated to you a couple of times about some issues that we're having at the high school. You have a building that's 14, 15 years old and two things have occurred. One, the boiler exhaust system in the domestic hot water pipes completely have rusted out and needed to be repaired at a cost of about $100,000. And we have started that work because I needed hot water at the beginning of the school year and time to, you know, make sure that it's working properly. The second one has been the lighting system, which has been, we've had lights on 24/7 since May, pretty much on the manual system because of an electronics issue for a company that doesn't necessarily produce the product anymore and we've had to try to get a fix to it. That's estimated at about $150,000. We have $415,000 in our capital improvement funds, so this will take up quite a chunk of it. With the lighting panel, Bill is trying to work with Efficiency Maine to see if we can get any rebates on that. Probably is a long shot, but we're hoping to. And these are just critical areas that need to be fixed and have them in place.
The 400 and some odd thousand dollar bucket of capital improvements, were either of these two known when that bucket of money was originally allocated?
We had worked on that, you know, back in February in the budget and then we always knew that the lighting system was not like great and then it just totally went bonkers in May. And so that one, no. And then the pipe started leaking this winter. We weren't even aware of the boiler exhaust system until they came for the inspection of the boiler and they started looking up through the ceiling. And so, no, these were not what we were hoping to spend money on.
Okay, thanks.
Marie.
So are these systems annually reviewed?
No. Like, your boilers are inspected every year, your elevators are inspected every year, you have to have licenses, et cetera. Your lighting system is a control system that's based off electronic controls, much like a fire system. There are schedules that we can put lights on and off, motion centers, sensors, et cetera. That one just straight failed. Like, so we had some parts of the building that last spring, we couldn't really even turn the lights on or off and, and so we had to put it on a manual system so it was running all the time. So, you know, these are one of these things that happened. You don't have an inspection of the lighting system. You'd have an inspector of your fire alarm system every single year and looking like that, but these ones, no.
I know these things are unexpected and not necessarily good news, but I, I'm very supportive of just getting after them. The, you know, in my experience, these things just, they, they just get worse, you know, before they get better. So it's good to be repairing them. And I will confess to a, a real ultimate pet peeve of mine is lights on during the daytime, so, when they're not needed. So it'll be good and there is energy savings at least associated with that.
My pet peeve is when I drive by at night and I see them on. That's the one that drives me insane. But it's just, it, you know, we were all so scared that by using the system, we would get into a more serious situation where we had no lights and then an inability to fix them quickly enough. Because there's a lot, a lot of it's going to be like cabling for the control systems throughout the building. That's where your big expense is.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the three items, the boiler exhaust piping system, the domestic water piping system, and the lighting control system for $250,000 coming out of the CIP, which will leave a balance of $165,000 in there.
I'll second that motion.
And moved by John, seconded by Marie, that we make this series of repairs to the boiler exhaust piping system, domestic water piping and lighting control system for a sum of $250,000 to come from the CIP. Any discussion? Chad.
Is the process to, for any withdrawal from the CIP bucket approved by the committee or is it limited by a dollar value? Are we, are we approving something that Jeremy should be in control of without our approval? I'm just wondering where, where the line is in the process.
So, so typically, Chad, these are smaller type projects. Like last year when we did paving and I brought it, we brought, we talked about it in Finance Committee and, you know, you're over $100,000, that's one thing. If we're, you know, if it's $10,000 to fix like an elevator or something, we probably would just do that piece. I just felt like these ones were so large and it just ate up, it eats up so much of And it's something that you won't ever see. That's the hard part. It's like, you know, even if you get new windows or new flooring or something, everyone's like, "Oh, you've done, we're going to see none of this," which is somewhat disappointing, I guess.
Procedurally, this is a little bit belt and suspenders, but I think it is good that we're having this discussion. John.
So, so basically, the school doesn't have any type system on how to spend any of the CIP or any big expenditure. So that's, you know, when it came to finance, we usually try to send it here so at least the whole board understands what the process is and it's not being just made in a vacuum.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Good discussion. Marie.
I just want to make sure, like, moving forward, I, I, I just had, I had a hard time with this when I saw this, like, you know, 15 years ago, something was done and almost, I don't know, did they jimmy rig this thing together because they didn't have whatever and, you know, it ended up, you know, causing a problem like down the road and it's an expensive problem. I mean, if you're, if we're running our households, we're looking at, okay, I've got, I've got to paint the house and the whatever and, you know, there are things that get inspected and done and I, this just kind of, I don't know, if we're getting things inspected, someone should have been up on the up and up 15 years ago that something wasn't amiss. It was before your time. It just seems, I don't know, it just seems a little funny to me.
Well, I think one of the things that's important for you guys to remember and this, you know, there's always lessons learned in everything that you do. And this is no slight at Phil Rattling, who was a very hard worker. But at that time, when you constructed the high school and did the renovations, you did not have a true clerk of the works that was monitoring everything. Phil was working for the city and the school department while also handling a major construction project worth 35, you know, at that time, 35 million, 40 million dollars was a huge construction project. When we do these small additions, I think it's very doable by district staff. If you're going out to build a new school, you need to have your clerk of the works or an owner, and your owner's rep there on site all the time, going through these things, making sure it's done correctly and being willing to hit pause. And I'm not saying that Phil didn't do that. I just think there was a lot on that man's plate during that time. And 15 years later, you can't go back on a, on a design piece that someone, you know, had black pipe that is corroded now that shouldn't control. I mean, Jim doesn't really understand why it's doing that. And they're new, they were a newer technology system. You know, Jim basically says, "Yeah, it was a pretty low-end system that you put in." And so that's sometimes what you get when you are going to the lowest bidder.
All right, we got a motion here on the floor. Chad.
So, does this now open our aperture to look at other expensive... So does this now open our aperture to look at other expensive aging systems before budget season next year? So we can maybe set up some inspections and get a better idea of the health of some of our infrastructure?
Yeah, I think we certainly can. You know, Bill keeps it pretty good tight on, on, on things. And again, really in a pretty good space until these ones came along, because I don't think we would have expected a fifteen-year-old system to do that, but we certainly can have Bill go around and give a priority list of, I think there's like cosmetic and floors and windows, and then there's air quality systems and other pieces like that that are probably on a different level.
Okay, anything further? Michelle?
So just looking ahead, if we're using this big chunk out of our CIP fund, are there other things down the road that we were planning to use that for that, that we're okay to set aside?
Well, we were kind of just looking for, you know, number one, everything's costing more than it ever did. And so that was kind of a concern of ours. We had some water pump issues at the primary school that we were hoping to address over time. I was really hoping to look at, based on where we come in on contingency funds and construction funds, the front bathrooms at the primary school were something that were on the list to address, just as we kind of go through those pieces. We are always looking to do more painting, turning our attention to BIS, you know, and hopefully solving the window process there. Someday, we weren't going to solve it with four hundred thousand dollars. There's always more paving to do. Panels, lighting, just keeping those things up, updated. And going through is just four hun, really, four hundred thousand dollars does not go far at all in a district this size.
That's fair and good question, Chad. I think we want to make sure we are thinking about that going into the next budget year. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor? And anyone opposed? Looks like that's unanimous. Good discussion there, and I think, I like, I really like the theme of kind of no Band-Aids as we're making, as we're making those repairs. Let's, let's get them, get them right. Okay, that takes us to item D, Resiliency Coordinators. You want to cue this one up, Jeremy?
Yeah, so Megan had asked for a memo on resiliency coordinators, and Chris said, put that together with feedback from the distance, from the district's resiliency and truancy coordinators. And so, Chris, do you want to kick that off?
Sounds good. Chris, and Marcus, on any of this, if you want to jump in, just raise your hand and we'll arrange a microphone for you.
Yes, good evening. So at the last school committee member, school committee member, school committee meeting that I chaired in Jeremy's absence, Megan had inquired, I think, for a second time and requested a memo about what are some of the activities that our resiliency coordinators are regularly engaged in. And so Mandy and I went back and looked at our sort of founding documents for that position and reviewed the initial correspondence with school committee when we created those positions and how we were able to code those positions so that we were able to get state funding and not sort of mess up our subsidy. And we put together a comprehensive memo that talks a little bit about the impact that these people have on the community, what the work is that they do kind of on a day-to-day basis. We established kind of a baseline draft, and I shopped it to an elementary and a high school resiliency coordinator and said, hey, can you guys take a look at this? And they got back to me and said, we're actually meeting next week. Can the whole group take, take a look at it, make some suggestions? And I said, of course. And so they added a little bit of color about, and a little bit more sort of intimate detail about how they're spending their times and, and the impact that they're having on our schools. I don't have a lot of direct interaction with resiliency coordinators outside of really the Bedford-Sacco ready events that we have, but was able to be responsive to Megan's requests. And I actually think if there are a lot of questions that the board has, I'm going to ask principals to come down and help out because they interact with these folks more than I. I don't supervise them.
Megan?
Great. Thank you so much for putting this together. I appreciate it. I think what my question was specifically was, I think I have some level of understanding that these were the different activities that each resiliency coordinator did in the building, but it's nice to see it so black and white, so I really appreciate that. I think what I kind of wanted to understand as we look towards what supports are happening in our school and what, what we're, what we're looking to kind of achieve, is what are they doing in each school now, right? So like, my assumption would be that the way a resiliency coordinator is acting in BPS would be different than the way that they're acting in BHS. So I think what I was really looking for is like, this is the job description of a resiliency coordinator, but in the high school, what percentage of the time are they doing a someday as opposed to a BPS? You know, I would assume that that would be a different structure, and that's kind of what I wanted to understand. Because I would think truancy and absenteeism are things that are happening from K to twelve, right? And that they're, they're involved in that from K to twelve in family engagement, but there's, there's other pieces to their job that I think would be different in different schools, and I just kind of wanted to get an understanding, school by school, of what that was, because I, I hear really good things about resiliency coordinators, and then I get questions sometimes about like, why is it going this way in this school, but it's different in this school? And so I just wanted to be more kind of aware, school by school, of what the process was.
Other thoughts on this? Lisa?
So I don't even remember when we created this job. God, I tried to remember, but I couldn't get it. Two thousand and eighteen? Okay, so we're looking, it's a while, a while ago. And I think I had gone to workshops and all kinds of things discussing this, because I think, looking at other schools, they probably have different titles for these type of positions, but nobody has a resiliency resource truancy coordinator, per se. Except for Bedford and Sacco. So I was happy she brought it up, because I was getting a lot of questions, like I, I didn't know where to begin, so I started to talk about it to different schools in the area. Like Lewiston doesn't have anything like that, Kennybunk doesn't have anything like that, Sanford has more of a support students coordinator. Portland has more of support. This person is more of a support for ML staff. So it's all over the place, and this district and Sacco has similar positions, right? So my question is, looking at the job description, and if we've had this for eight years, nine years, whatever years, they are to collect data to see how we're doing with resilience, I guess, would be one. How are we doing academically? How are we doing with truancy? Like, improving school climate, raising the academics, engaging families in the school. So we don't really have any real data saying that this position is, is beneficial because. So that's why it's making it hard, I think, for the board to say, you know, what's, what are they doing? Is it effective? Is this a good position to have in our schools? The other thing was, the big thing for me was the some days. Are they really effective? I've talked to a lot of people about this. Some parents had no idea what, what the some days were. I asked my son and a couple of his friends. He said he had no idea what it was, so. And if you're looking at one person coordinating everything on this job description, where do they have time to do a someday? And is that really essential to this job? Like, and the reason you had, I think you had it on, on here, let me just bear with me here for a minute. The reason for the some days, what are the reasons for the some days? Okay, so they serve as a powerful relationship-building tool that creates connections between students and caring adults. Well, they have a lot of other stuff to do, and they probably are doing that, but I always felt that I think teachers do a really good job connecting with their students. And I also feel that some students that never had a someday, because it's really impossible for one person to coordinate a someday for everybody, and is it worth the investment, not for the position, I, I don't want people to misunderstand that, but to have them do these some days, and it's not a free thing, like most some days, there's a cost to it, whether it's they want a movie, they want pizza, they want to have a fun time. I also think schools do a lot of that, too. They do a lot of fun activities within their home rooms, within so many programs that we offer. I think there was a staff member that came to a meeting, she's a staff, I wish I knew her name, and I feel bad that I don't right now, but enlisted all the programs we have at the high school to make kids successful. Like, it went on and on, and I think that night, our head was spinning. I'm like, I don't even believe, yeah, thank you. I said, I don't believe that we have all these programs. If we have all of these programs in place, if we have a resiliency coordinator, and I think it's an important position, I don't want anyone to misunderstand that, then we should be doing better academically. Truancy should be improving, school climate should be improving, relationships should be improving, and I don't see any data to say that that's happening right now. I mean, they came one time and they expressed the importance of some days, and I think I was the only one that kind of was, geez, I don't see them being that effective. They're fun, but is it important to always engage students with fun to make them be resilient? To make them do better academically, to make them show up to school? You could go through a list of middle school and all the schools, they're having fun a lot in school. I think that they do a lot of fun activities. I think pizza parties or whatever. So I'm wondering if in this job description, I don't see the word some days unless I missed it. And so where did that come to be and why are we continuing to do something that might not be very effective in improving what this board, and I'm speaking for the board, I shouldn't, but wanting to improve academics, wanting to improve behavior, wanting to improve attendance, resilience, you know? How is that happening and how can we connect it to the some days and say, these are so effective and so great that we want to continue them? I guess that would be my question about some days. Anybody else have something to say about that?
Megan?
And I don't want to focus, there, there's a great list on here of all the things that they do. So I don't want to focus on that specifically, but what I remember when they came to present to us, the resiliency coordinators, was that that was what their presentation was, right? Like, we are in charge of some days, and it takes, you know, this takes all of our time. And so I think that that's what brought me back to, is there more to that? Is there more than what they're doing? Because the one time they came to talk to us, it was a presentation about some days. So that was what they talked about, and, and they talked about how hard that was and time-consuming to coordinate. And so when we're looking at, you know, the resiliency and the SEL and all these other things that they're responsible for, I think I just want to know, like, do they have the time to do all of those things? Or is it really just that they're coordinating some days, like what we heard from them when they came to present to us a couple of years ago? So I just need someone to tell me, yes, they really are just coordinating some days, or no, some days are like a five percent a part of their job, and ninety-five percent is everything else on this list. Like, I just want to know what it is, because I, I think that what I hear about are the some days, and I just want to make sure I have like an accurate picture before I judge it. So yeah, that's why I'm looking to the principals, too, because like you guys know what's going on. I don't want to put anyone on the spot. I just want to understand, so I'm not making assumptions.
Ms. Jakes, thanks. Need an important role, and we look like we're looking for some more explanation on it. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks. I can only speak to the high school in this, and I, I realize that the high school level is very different than K through seven. So at the high school, I can tell you that I, I hired the first resiliency coordinator. The younger schools had a resiliency coordinator in place to see how that went. It was a successful program, and so then I was tasked when I came on board to hire one at the high school as well. So the resiliency coordinator has been, this will be his sixth year at the high school. The original part of his job, some days weren't on the table at the high school. That came in the next summer, and it was a, we're going to implement this district-wide, who in the building can help coordinate this? And in relationship building and resiliency and looking at how it was being done in the elementary schools, the resiliency coordinator and I decided that it would be the two of us together kind of implementing that. So we do it a little different at the high school. The majority of our resiliency coordinator's time is not spent on some days. He is our, you know, and Lisa, to your point, you talked about other schools don't have this. You're right, they don't, but they have an attendance coordinator. They have a truancy coordinator. They have, and we don't, and we don't have those. So the, our resiliency coordinator acts as the attendance coordinator. He chairs that board. He also, or the committee at the school, he also acts as our truancy coordinator in partnership with our assistant principal and with Heather Trembley, our student support coordinator, and myself. So he's doing home visits. He's trying to get kids who aren't in school, in school, looking at absenteeism, working with our unhoused students, referring them to the welcome center, seeing how we can work with area agencies to get them their help. He coordinates our food program, so our backpack program with Youthful Maine. We do, every Friday, we send bags home with kids that need it. He also works with, a lot with our prevention coordinator, so in alcohol, tobacco, drug prevention, and does a lot of work with our community partners, as well as coordinates our entire advisory program. So he's the one that spears the, the, the lessons and the, you know, the state, we have state mandated SEL lessons that we have to implement, so our resiliency coordinator is the one that coordinates that with all of the teachers. The someday piece at the high school, every senior gets an individual someday if they'd like it. So we, we go to their advisories at the beginning of the year, because a lot of, the senior class was the class, we found four years ago, that had not had them in any of the lower grades. So we said, let's start doing that, so we can make sure as every student exits the Bedford School Department, they've had a someday. So I would say about fifty percent of the seniors take advantage of that, and we coordinate it with teachers. We put it out to teachers and say, hey, this, these are what all the kids want for their some days. Who wants to help? And teachers jump in and help and, and love doing it. And then for eighth grade, we do it advisory-based. So when they come in, we do a someday for their advisory. And it might be, you know, a soccer game with, you know, some of the students, or it might be a pizza party, or it might be a conversation with, you know, some other teachers from their elementary school that come up to see them. So I would say that, you know, five percent of our resiliency coordinator's job is to do with some days. Ninety-five percent is supporting students and getting them to school and making sure they find success. He also is the one that started our ambassador program last year for our ML students. So we had about seventy-six students that were able to be paired up with mentors in our school to help find some success, so.
So coordinating some days is also on your plate?
Yes, because I want it to be. I think it's important. I do. And I, I think it's something with my social work back, I don't get to use my social work background all the time as a high school principal, and it's a way that I can stay connected and, and help do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Small thing that brightens the day. And Martha, you also does the Community Service Day, right? Which has been huge. I wanted to point out that, that's been a very big success and really nice to see in the community.
Yeah, he helps coordinate our Tiger Pride Days as well. You're right.
Other thoughts, comments on the, Chad?
One last question. Is there a way that we can get some metrics on some of these major bullets that are shown in this presentation, like how we've done since the resident officer came into being? Specifically, I'm focused on truancy. You know, have we seen the trends go down since two thousand and eighteen, or are they steady or are they increasing? I mean, that may give us better insight into whether or not they're being effective.
Yeah, I'm sure we can look at overall.
But I think that's how it's being used at the high school. That might not be the metric that they're, which should be judged on in another school, right? That's what I'm worried about.
If truancy, if truancy is a major, a significant challenge in the district, then we should focus on it. And if the resilient officers, if the resilience officers, that's it in their role, then I guess we should have data and be analyzing it.
Truancy would be the lowest barrier, most reliable data point. Academic outcomes would be incredibly challenging, because we didn't test during COVID, and the state's testing regime has changed three times since two thousand and eighteen, so you're not going to get reliable academic data. It should be relatively easy for us to pull that truancy data, and I'm happy to follow up at a subsequent meeting.
That acceptable to the committee? Look for a, a report, some data for an upcoming meeting? Okay, maybe the first September meeting?
Well, I, I think that getting absentee and truancy Well, I, I think that getting absentee and truancy data is great. But I, I don't think that it relates back to making a judgment about this position, because that's only, I think, how this position's used at the high school. So like, I just want to be clear. I don't think the question's been answered district-wide. So I, I don't want to create a conversation where, like, false data comes up. Do you know what I mean? Want to be clear about that.
Just, I thought I heard, and I don't know if it was Jeremy or Chris, that said truancy was an issue throughout the district. It wasn't just a high school thing.
I just want to separate the two conversations from the resiliency coordinator and truancy, because my understanding is that that is not the focus of what they do in every school.
So does every, I guess, do the other schools have someone in charge of truancy?
Want to take that, Jeremy?
Other than the resilience officer?
Yeah, it could be the principal, could be several people working on it. A lot of times, it's whoever has a relationship with the family. May start with the case manager. It may be the guidance counselor, because they know this family. It may be some of our EL staff. It can be very challenging sometimes when we look at truancy for our EL staff, is because you may have a family that's visiting their family overseas, and it's gone for a month. That kills our truancy, that kills our truancy data.
It just makes it hard for us to understand the position. Because it's not consistent.
Well, I think you also have different needs at different levels. I think that some days are probably more important for a younger kid than they may be an older kid at certain times. It's about connection to schools. Some kids who haven't experienced certain things. Or some kiddos who aren't having a hard time, and they get to do something that is maybe a give-back. I clearly know exactly what my daughter's three some days were the last year, because I think they've been very important about family and community conversations in our home, which may be a very different experience than in someone else's home. And so sometimes it's about what our responsiveness is to a certain situation. Our resiliency coordinators spend a whole heck of a lot of time with our homeless population. Food, clothing, housing. You know, a fire in town in the middle of the year, we would be, they'd be spearheading those efforts in our schools. And so sometimes it's situational, it looks a little different than others.
I guess for me, and I, in this, I don't want this to seem like this is the hill I want to die on, but it is just like, once I get fixated on wanting clarity about something, I get really fixated. So I guess that's where I'm at. I, I think what I'd like to know is, for every school, and I don't have any judgment about how anybody uses their resiliency coordinator, but I think I have a very clear idea right now, right? That position in the high school is used like this. And so if you wanted metrics about how well that was going, I'd know what data points to look at. There's clear programs that have been started, and there's clear data to look at. So if anybody ever said, justify to me why there's a resiliency coordinator instead of another assistant principal, because you've been clear that you created these positions instead of assistant principals. So sometimes when people say, why isn't there another assistant principal? I can say, we're doing resiliency coordinators, and this is what they're offering. But it would be, and I agree with you that the needs at BPS and BIS and BMS and BHS are different. But what I'd like at some point, and I guess that's what I was actually asking for in this memo, is for school by school to know, this is how we use our resiliency coordinator. This is what they're doing, and this is why it's working. So that I know that information. Because it is a unique, interesting, great position. But it can, it is one of those positions that can also get caught up in, you know, working really hard in this direction when really this is the direction, you know? And I, again, I trust the admin. I do. But it's not about the person in the position at the time. It's about the integrity of the actual position.
Well, there's also just a big funding piece that goes along with it, too. Because resiliency coordinators don't count as a negative factor against social work or guidance or administration. So if your, if your ratio is higher, you essentially could lose state funding by coding them differently. So having that unique code allows us to have those positions without penalized funding through the EPS formula.
I understand why you've done it. It doesn't mean I still don't want to understand the position better. Because it's one of the positions we have that I don't understand. And it's different in every school, which, again, I get, the needs are different, but I want to understand it. I want to understand when somebody says, like, well, what I hear about this person in this school is that all they do is some days, and my kid never got a someday, and so what have they done? You know, it's like, and again, you and I have talked about this. I know I only get one version of a story. But if I don't have the other version of a story, I don't have anything to answer back. So information is helpful.
Where does that leave us? So if we want to maybe come back at the first or second September meeting or something?
I don't want to put anything more on admins as schools approaching. I just want to be really clear. It's just something I'd like to know at some point.
And I will say, we don't have a lot, I mean, we have a lot, but we don't have everything we need. Let's put it that way. And a lot of times, schools don't have what they need because of funding, right? There's not enough money to have a separate truancy person and a separate resiliency person and a separate behavior person. Like, that's a lot. That's a lot. So to me, this was, when I read this, it was like a catch-all. And I, I agree with you that we have to have more of a defined purpose for this, and also kind of measure, is it valuable to have them do this, this, and this? Or is it being effective? Is it not? And I might be, are they, so they have a mental social work background, most of these people that are hired in this position, so it could be an extra social worker, an extra, but we don't know. It's, title's important, but it's, this is the title. It's resilience, resource, truancy coordinator. I don't know if it had truancy on when we first did this, but truancy became an issue, so it probably was said, we'll give it to this resiliency person. If you read through this list and you look at just your own no, no of schools, for one person to be able to handle all of that would be a lot, because most kids are coming with all of this type of baggage. So this one person is having to do a lot of work. That's what was my feelings, too. And when they did come and say, well, the some days are taking up our time, well, I'm, I push those aside, because I would think that getting kids engaged in school, getting kids, and I know there's a lot of great teachers that are already doing those things within their classroom. They're already doing that. They're making relationships and connections if it's a really good teacher, and we have really good teachers. So we could say, well, that's not going to be the sole purpose of the resiliency person at this school, because all those teachers are doing all those great things. So we can kind of, not to reinvent it, but to redefine what this person is actually going to do. It's not that we don't need the position. It's not that this is not worthy of paying a person to come in and do this. It's, we have to show us that this is a worthy position and redefine what they have to do between each school. Because what Martha just explained is very important for the high school. Like, those are very important things. And then some of those would be important for Lindsay's schools and Scott's schools and everybody's schools, right? But I don't want them to be hooked up on just being the catch-all. Oh, look, give it to her, because, you know, we don't know. Just go do this. Go pick this up at the store. Go do this, go do that. That's a lot, right? For this person. So I guess what we're looking, or I'm looking, and this is Megan that brought this up, but what I'm looking for is to maybe come back and say how effective some days still are. I mean, is there data to say these kids, you say it's important, and, and that's right, but your daughter probably can be exposed to a lot of things, just because she has you as a dad, right? Right?
That can be positive or negative.
Well, well, I didn't want to say that. I didn't want to say that, but-
I'm just saying, but I think it's also important that we think about all of our students in the schools. And some of our students may not get this, or may not get this-
And I understand that, Jeremy. And that's why we do so many other things with these students, to make them engaged in doing activities. And even at my middle school that I was at, we took them to all these activities to make sure all kids were engaged. But then there comes a line that we have to make sure, besides having fun and having all this engagement, that they're actually-
But I'm not sure that it's necessarily fun, and I want to, I want to-
Some days sound pretty fun to me.
They do. But let's, let me, let me give you the three examples from my home, okay? That were not necessarily about having fun, and I can only speak to my own experience. The first was a bake sale as a third grader to support the arts. As a fourth grader, it was to serve lunch with the lunch lady and her friends, that costs no money in time. And how that made those employees feel to have kids there was important. And then last year, it was a school bake sale that raised over $1,500 for Hoops for Hopes. Now, that's not all children.
Yeah, but that's not the some days I'm hearing about, I guess. And I, and I also-
And some kids choose different things.
Right.
Okay? And we can have some kids come in and talk about their some days and the staff. But those three activities that were-
Maybe somebody else does. I don't want that.
But those three activities for, and I again, only can reference this from my child, were wonderful conversations at home. They supported something else. And I know that, you know, the one that was for Hoops for Hopes, that was this year, was very special, because her grandmother had breast cancer, and that was a piece. And I felt like we used the school as an avenue to do some of those things.
Maybe we should change that from some days to just community involvement or something, you know? So they're not choosing, if my friend Johnny, he's been really horrible today, but it's okay, because I want to have lunch with him and I want to have pizza, and Johnny gets rewarded to come to my someday, even though his behavior was atrocious for the entire week, and he threw chairs all over the place. So there's some things that it's not being effectively working out. You know what I mean? So if we said, instead of some days, because we always say we want a kindness day, we want to this, we've got to teach kids to do all this stuff now to be kind and everything. Not you, you're really good. But I'm just saying that you, we don't, we want to make sure that they're involved in the community. And both of these people said something about their community tonight. But not every student does, because, and I don't, I'm saying this, and it's going to sound horrible, but maybe the some days is being too selfish. Like, it's not teaching kids resilience and to think of others, it's thinking of them and what they miss. And it's okay, because when you help somebody else and you say it's going to be a community base someday, what would you like to do to help your community? I want to go to the nursing home and, you know, give cards to people. It makes you feel good doing that, right? So maybe that kind of changing, because we want all of our kids, like this wonderful boy here, to be involved in the community, be, be responsible, to be resilient, to learn how to do academics, you know, and improve. That's our goal. So to relook at something and say, is that meeting our goal, has a district? Is resiliency coordinators doing a good job? Yes, right? But what is their job, and what is the important things that we need to put on them, and other things not? And start to reinvent what we want to do, calling it a community involvement, something. I don't know. You can come up with a name. So that would be my take on this, in reading this and the job description, is to really put more of a community-based activity, rather than a pizza party, movies, that they get all the time at school. And you know that. I mean, I could ask a kid at school, I mean, how'd you have a pizza party? Oh, my God, Christmas time, this time, this time. They all get those things. So what you're telling me is you have great kids at your house, and they're saying, I want to help, and I want to do a cupcake sale and raise the money. Those are great kids. But we want to reach the kids that might not have that in them, and show them that helping other people is a good thing. So that's what I got to say.
All right. Deep dive on a good topic. We need to close this one out. Megan, you got a opposing comment?
Yeah, just what I-
You're closing me up. Are you closing me up? I'm marking that down.
I think if we're going to do, if this new school identifies, like, this is what we need, right? The most for this position, we'll be able to kind of do that, right? Like, it's not about the some days, or about the family engagement, or about the truancy, or any one part of their job description. I think we just want to be clear about, like, what's the high priority at EPS, BIS, BMS, and the resiliency coordinator, giving that mark, right? And then if some days isn't the priority, great, it's not, we'll move on. But if it is, you know, great.
My kids' responsibility?
Right. So we just, the, the start is to figure out what's the priority.
All right. Thank you. Good discussion. Got some good work ahead of us. Chris?
Yep. Just the last piece on providing that truancy data. Given that it's the start of school, and it's a very busy time for our data management registrar folks, I'm wondering if first meeting in October would be okay to dig through that data?
Is that acceptable to the committee?
This isn't an exigency, right? We don't need this next meeting?
And when is the everybody grad, you have like a-
Graduation committee.
Graduation committee. When do they meet?
Dropout prevention. Usually in the spring.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Important discussion. Much appreciated. We got a couple of things I think we need motions on. The first is this item E, Center of Technology New Program Approval Proposals.
Marty, I'm sorry. Can I ask for a favor? Could we take F first? Because I have to step out. If there's any questions, I want to be able to answer them. Could we do the Catholic Charities memo?
Is that acceptable, committee, to take item F first? Okay. Let's do that.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to the CCM Grant Award.
So there's no motion needed here. This is just fantastic news for, for the school. I stood before this organization, I think, four or five months ago, and said, we're losing our Catholic Charities funding as a result of an executive order. That's true. Catholic Fund, Catholic Charities was not re-upped for fiscal '26 from the federal government, but they did have remaining funds available that they reallocated to top-performing partners, and that includes our consortium. So we're going to receive an identical award again this year. That's money that we did not expect to have, which means that we will not have to shutter our welcome center. We'll be able to continue to offset local expenditures that we use for translation and transportation services, and we'll be able to continue to run our after-school and summer programming for refugees and new maters.
Good news. Good work, Chris. Thank you. Any questions on that topic?
So if anyone's asking about the welcome center, why is it still here? And all the things after I said we were going to have to close it down, that's the reason why.
Yeah. Especially critical now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Okay. Then moving to item E, the Center of Technology New Program Approval Proposals.
I'll make a motion that we approve the digital art program and the small engine mechanic and repair technology technician to get state approval.
Second.
Second. Yeah.
Moved by John, seconded by Megan, to approve those two new programs. Any discussion? Thoughts?
Just, just remember that this does not necessarily mean that we have them.
Right.
This is all about getting the approval so that we can be in line for state funding Um, this is all about getting the approval so that we can be in line for state funding for these programs as we build the budget.
Okay, great. Uh, Marie?
I just think these are two really great additions. Um, should we be approved, you know, to, to have these in addition to all the other wonderful programs that we have going on at the COT? Um, I was really excited when I saw both of these. Um, I don't know about you, but it's, it's difficult to find small engine repair people, um, you know, these days. So, um, I, I'm excited about this. I, I hope this comes through for two thousand and twenty-six. Um, I'm a big fan of, of, of both of these programs and, um, let's keep our fingers crossed.
This, just as, as an aside on these pieces, uh, when you look at student population, um, when we talked about enrollment, we're at four hundred and ninety-five students right now at the center today. Now, obviously, we'll probably get some adds and drops, you know, throughout the beginning. But both of these programs would be more likely to be available for freshmen and sophomores. Um, you know, take small engine, for example. That would be the lead-up to possibly the auto body program. Um, also, you know, even though that we've had an addition, space still is an issue because there's not an ounce really more here. And so as Polit continues to drive forward more programming requests, we kind of have to go through the list and see what kind of will work in the space that we, we have. Um, and those two seem to also be very high level of interest areas.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And data's unanimous. I want to echo the comments that these two programs sure look like winners. And, uh, very good. All right, that takes us to item G, the first reading of policy GBGE dash R.
I'll make a motion that we remove from table GBGE dash R.
Second.
It's been moved by John and seconded by Michelle to remove GBGE dash R from the table. It's now before us. Any comments, thoughts, or updates or discussion?
Just taking it off the table.
Okay, um, are we ready?
Motion to pass.
Okay, get that first. Take it off the table first.
Thought we, oh, we've got to approve it all. Okay.
We've got to.
I'm getting it off the table.
Okay, and all those in favor removing from the table? Okay, that's unanimous?
Now I make a motion to pass GBGE dash R.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, approve GBG dash R. Any discussions, thoughts, comments? Okay, all those in favor? And that is unanimous. Very good. That takes us to the public participation part of the agenda, uh, three-minute limit. Anybody wishing to address the committee on any item either before us or not tonight? Please don't be bashful. Anyone? Okay, well, we're easy to find via email and, uh, we meet every other week and we always like to hear from the public. Uh, communications from the committee? Nobody? Okay, I, I just have a couple of quick things. Oh, okay, thank you. All right, I will keep it very, very brief. Um, new playground construction is beginning at the rec center. Uh, check it out. It's really neat. Um, we have, uh, we have had to remove some diseased trees. Those will be replaced with some more appropriate disease-resistant trees. Uh, we had some trees that were, uh, not suited for that environment, including a couple that were identified as invasive. So they did have to come down. It's a shame to see them come down, but we are using the, uh, the chips actually within city projects and, uh, that new playground install is going to be really exciting. It's taking place over the next three weeks or so. So swing by the rec center to see all of that, uh, great construction work. And this is a busy weekend for community events in Bedford. Fringe Fest is Friday night. This is a wonderful and kind of whimsical event on Washington Street. We'll actually close the street and, um, of all things, there's, uh, free pie, so come on down and then check that out. And then, of course, River Jam is Saturday and it's a really big event. And it's in a different place this year. It's, uh, next to the parking garage on the riverside there. So it won't be blocking any streets or traffic. And we have all kinds of music, all the way from kids from the Maine Academy of Modern Music to start today to National Touring Acts, uh, to end the evening. So please check out River Jam. And with that, I have nothing further.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by John, seconded by Megan to adjourn. All those in favor? And anyone oppose? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thanks. Good meeting. See you.